Good morning, welcome. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 6th. I am Chair of the Board Sean Flaherty. With me is Vice Chair and Commissioner Rick Vest, as well as Commissioner Deb Shore, Commissioner Roma Amundsen, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available by the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda I and I are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 29th, 2020.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Epstein.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes on extension. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through October 6th, 2020.
Move approval of the claims? I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Grant contracts with the following: Cedar's Youth Services for the Crisis Stabilization Program, an amount of $74,228. Donald Blue for the Crisis Response Program, an amount of $6,000. Amendments to the following county contracts for annual supply, power, and hand tools: C-17-826 with fascinol, C-17-828 with Too Fast Supply Company, C-17-829 with total tool supply. Amendment to county contract C-18-642 with AV Associates and Nebraska for annual supply, household miscellaneous batteries. Right-of-way contracts with the following: Capital City Horse and Pony Club, North 14th Street, and West Frederick Road, in a total amount of $19,068. Joetta Schwanniger and Darren Schwanniger, Southwest 2nd Street and West Hallam Road, in an amount of $4,503. Received and placed on file, the county sheriff quarterly report for July through September 2020.
Move approval of the consent items?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is new business. 4A is a resolution authorizing the chief administrative officer to function as the authorized organization representative for purposes of securing and administering grant funding through the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, the Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This would authorize David Durbin to be the authorized representative for the Department of Justice. Here within the last month, the Department of Justice has moved to a new online grant management system. And so before you individually signed all of the grant awards coming from the Department of Justice and put your initials in each corner, this will now be done online. So just to be clear, when we do receive a grant, when any department receives a grant, the expectation would still be to come to you for permission to apply, and then also once we receive the grant, to notify you and to make sure that you're authorizing that signature. But this resolution would allow David Durbin to receive all of the notifications when a grant is awarded. Right now, it goes to whoever the chair is of the board, and a lot of times it gets stuck in spam, so you have to go in and get it out. So it's just more of a unified process to make sure we don't miss a grant coming into our county. And then it would also allow one person in your office to be able to go into that database and click all of the buttons saying that yes, we adhere to all their certifications, their assurances, and that we're accepting the grant award.
And it's less complicated because the chair rotates.
Yeah, exactly.
Those emails look like spam. Enjoy. They don't look real. They look like a scam.
I move approval.
Second. Sounds like a really good move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution authorizing the installation of traffic control devices in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. What I've put up on the overhead are locations on Hickman Road. Hickman, the city of Hickman continues to grow. We have a couple connections that aren't necessarily contained within the city of Hickman yet, but do have some sight distance problems, which means we need to go ahead and reduce the speed to 45 miles an hour. And so again, this is a public safety issue due to sight distance, which is why we're reducing the speed.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is an agreement with JEO for professional engineering services related to the 2020 and 2021 countywide wetland delineation services for different county sites. The term of the agreement shall be for two years. The cost to county is $50,000.
I almost got away. Pam Dingman County Engineer, this is for our annual on-call wetland services. So what happens is, as we design our pipes, some of them need wetland delineations and U.S. Army Corps of Engineer permits, some of them don't. And so obviously, if we have to do the delineation and file for the permit, this is the contract that will do that under. We do not have wetland delineators on staff at this time.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a special designated license application from Cosmiki Cook Associates LLC for an event at Hillside Events at 12,400 West Denton Road, Denton, on October 24th, 2020.
Hello, I'm Lacey Cook. I'm co-owner of Cosmiki Cook Associates in Seward, Nebraska, and we are looking just to get a designated, special designated license to be able to bartend at a wedding event at Hillside Events in Denton, Nebraska.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question, I do believe this is the first time you've come before us?
Yes.
Can you give us a little bit about your background in the industry and your experience in doing events such as this?
Yeah. We started back in March of 2018. We have Cafe on Square in Seward, Nebraska, and the Brew House in Crete, Nebraska. We've done multiple events. A lot of them are just in Seward. There have been a few in Crete as well, like off-premises. So we have done several events. Probably, it's probably seven or eight, so we are crossing county lines and just not quite sure how to handle it, so.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
I would like to move approval of this pending the Health Department weighing in on it, just because of the size of the volume of people that you intend to have there. And I know we've mostly, when we've had some of these permits lately, the Health Department has weighed in, so I don't know if it's just an oversight on their part, but I don't want to slow it down because I know you need to keep it moving.
I think I put 100. I do have.
I saw 250.
Did I?
Estimate number of attendees, 250.
Yeah.
I did have the bride text me the amount of people, and I just looked quick. I was just trying to get it done, so, sorry. She said like 100, 100 people.
That sounds better than 250.
Sorry, I was just making sure we're covered, so.
So that was a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion for approval pending advice from the.
The Health Department, just that they've seen it, acknowledging they've seen it.
I'd second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
And probably with a correction that it is 100 people as opposed to 250 on the application, because that makes a great deal of difference.
Do I need to resubmit an application?
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4E is a grant contract with St. Monica's Behavioral Health for Transitional Housing for two Lancaster County Sentence Conversion Reentry Program participants. The term of the grant contract is October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2023, in the amount of $153,000 per year.
Good morning. Kim Etheridge, Director of Lancaster County Community Corrections. This is the housing option that we are in partnership with St. Monica's for our reentry expansion to include women. The initial grant was just for young adult males. This is going to expand that grant to the women in the correctional facility. So housing and treatment will be provided to them.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Glad for the expansion. Please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an agreement with Elizabeth Kessler to provide psychoeducational class instruction to participants of Lancaster County's pre-trial diversion program. The term of the agreement is October 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. The county shall pay $20 per hour, not should exceed 20 hours per week for the services provided.
Earlier this year, I had the individual who's providing our diversion services classes resign, and when COVID kind of took over everything, we discontinued any kind of class, offering any kind of classes. So I didn't make any effort to replace that individual until now. I was fortunate enough to be interviewing some staff or some individuals to replace a clinician that resigned from my office and ran across this young woman's application. And while I didn't hire her for my clinical position, I've found that she has a lot of potential, and so I thought I would bring her on to replace the diversion individual who'd resigned, to give her a little more experience and a little more supervision, so.
I will move approval.
And I will second that, but I do have a question. The, I noticed that it is for eight months, you know? Is this just merely a completion of that contract, or is it only going to be for that?
I think it's intended to go to the end of our fiscal year, and then there's probably a one-year automatic renewal on the contract.
Good, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4G is setting the annual salary for Ben Housen, Chief Deputy Sheriff, in the amount of $122,251 effective October 1st, 2020.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations.
H are grant contracts with the City of Lincoln Police Department to provide funding to the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for the Lincoln Lancaster County Investigative Narcotics Cooperative Task Force for the following terms: October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019, in amount of $80,660.36. October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, in amount of $54,750.1. And October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, in amount of $73,000.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a grant, or grant contract with the City of Lincoln Police Department to provide funding to the Lancaster County Attorney's Office for the Lincoln Lancaster County Investigative Narcotics Cooperative Task Force with the following terms: October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019, in amount of $154,687. October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, in amount of $146,953. October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2021, in the amount of $143,697.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4J is an agreement for professional services with Morone Associates to coordinate all testing procedures, including development and administration of exams and acquiring panels for each assessment exercise for emotional exam procedures. For the rank of Sergeant and Captain, the cost to county is $20,000.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Deputy County Attorney John Holloway is not here today, but she had asked that the Board approve this contingent upon receipt of full insurance requirements.
Modify my motion to make a contingent upon the receipt of the insurance.
I still second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4K is a contract with goals LLC to provide annual supply, sheriff uniform, clothing, and accessories. The contract shall be effective October 31st, 2020 through October 30th, 2021. The cost to county is not to exceed $21,000.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? So is this the pink tan pants?
That's my question. I'm just sitting there wondering.
Okay, it is. It is literally the pink tan pants. All right. So he was teed up. I had to do it.
We were all thinking it, so I just wanted to say it.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and the sheriff's department to award a contract to Jones Automotive, Inc. for the supply and installation of emergency equipment for city and county law enforcement vehicles. The estimated amount is $15,615.42 per cruiser, along with an hourly rate of $105 for the other miscellaneous labor, and a 20% markup on miscellaneous parts and equipment.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M are contracts with the following to provide equipment and accessory rental: Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company and NMMC, Inc.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4N are contracts with the following for annual service vehicle washes and related services. The contracts are for one year with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms. This includes BJ's Fleet Wash, LLC, and Jet Splash Full Service Car Wash.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is a grant contract with Center for Tech and Civic Life for the public purpose of planning and operationalizing safe and secure election administration in Lancaster County in 2020 from the period of June 15th, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, in amount of $404,584.50.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Very substantial grant.
It's just an amazing amount, isn't it?
Yes.
It's, I'm just blown away by this. And we're getting a check, right? We're not giving them our routing numbers? I really, I really approve of this, if it's real. So, excellent. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a recommendation from the Pension Review Committee in both the Lancaster County Employees Retirement and 457 Deferred Conversation Plans to replace Fidelity Advisor New Insights Fund, Class 1 with JP Morgan Large Cap Growth Fund, and replace PGIM QMA Small Cap Value Fund, Class R6, with separate account for Victory Sycamore Small Company Opportunity Fund, Prunus Pro Retirement Small Cap Value Victory.
The Board was briefed on this during our second quarter update. Most of the update was related to these changes. As stated during the, during the update and in the recommendation, the replacement of JP Morgan is pretty much a slam dunk. We wind up with cost savings across the board on that one, and we also wind up with a much better deal, with a better fund, with replacing, replacing the PGIM fund with this Victory special, separate account. These are both recommended by the, by Prudential, by Siegel Marco, and by the Pension Review Committee.
Yeah. I think my understanding from this was that, so we've got two funds that are underperforming. There's no question that I, that both those two funds should be replaced. One of them's going to be replaced with this JP Morgan fund, which, like Dave said, it's slam dunk. There really wasn't anything else that was going to be as beneficial to us as this one. The other one came down to, there was also another, I think everyone would agree, a valid choice. So the other decision was slightly less clear, but the Victory Fund is going to be a really solid option, and I think in the end, maybe just barely hedged out the other, so.
Yeah, the, this, really, those, both of those funds were really excellent.
Yeah.
We, we had to replace the other fund. It was not performing according to our investment, our investment standards. And what it came down to was a discussion of whether, of replacing a fund that fit the category in our plan. And so that, really, there is very close in that, what that's basically what pushed this, the second fund over, over the line.
Well, many thanks to the Pension Review Committee. I would move approval of this recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is an agreement with Serner Joe, Inc. for electronic filing recording of records with the Lancaster County Register of Deeds. There is no cost to county. The agreement is effective upon execution, and it has a 30-day termination provision.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundsen?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is update on COVID-19, a Lancaster County response.
Does anyone have any updates on this? The only thing I've got is Director Lopez has, since the middle of last week, been back up and running, and we're very much glad to have her and that she's doing well. She intends to come on Thursday and update the Board during the COVID response, so she said we can expect a seat then. I think we can move to public comment.
Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Are any members of the public wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, move to announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 8, 2020. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding the One and Six Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Thursday, October 8, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 13, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster.inny.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.inny.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
Move adjourn? Second.
We have a motion, second for adjournment. Is there any discussion?
Thank God Deb's back.
Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Yeah, we are adjourned. We will now convene the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, October 6. Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.inny.gov. Agenda I and I want our minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September 15, 2020.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are additions and deductions of the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This includes community action partnership in Lancaster and Sandra Counties, House of Prayer Christian Church, Emmanuel Retirement Communities, the Loan Center, Calvert Community Church, and Girls Scouts Spirits in Nebraska.
We will now open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemptions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Next is number four, action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number five is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Move adjourn? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.[1773.98]